All right, welcome tonight. I will open the meeting, the January 11th, 2021 addition of the Town of Garner Planning Commission meeting. Looks like there may be some technical difficulties, so not sure that we're streaming, but that may get resolved as we move forward. Thanks all for being here. Brian, if you wouldn't mind doing the roll call, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'll call the roll. John Blasko.
Here.
Vang Mao.
Here.
Gina Avant.
Here.
Dean Fox.
Here.
Ma Hogan.
Here.
Phillip Jefferson.
Here.
And Michael Voilin.
Here.
All right, thank you, Brian. Just as a reminder, we'll do this, we'll conduct this meeting similar to how we did our previous virtual meeting where rather than having a generally open floor for discussion and comments, we will do more of a down-the-line roll call approach. So that'll make it easier for us to manage and for Brian to take good notes. So with that, we'll move forward. I had no volunteers for the invocation, so we will skip that tonight.
Gentlemen, this is Vira's invocation.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Let us pray. Good Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you, Father God, for giving us another opportunity to come before you and make decisions concerning the Town of Garner. We ask and pray that you keep us safe amongst everything that's going on in the world with the virus and everything, and we ask that we can just come to a consensus and be pleasing unto your sight. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Next up on the agenda, we have the minutes from our last meeting of December 21. Would anyone like to make a motion, please?
This is Mike Voilin. I'll make that motion.
And the motion is to...
Accept the minutes. I make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Vira. I second the motion.
All right, before we take a vote, we'll go through real quick to see if there's any comments or questions. Ms. Hogan, do you have any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Jefferson?
I do not.
Mr. Voilin?
I do not.
Ms. Avant?
No, I don't.
Mr. Fox?
I wasn't here, so I'll let y'all be the judge on this.
All right, Mr. Mao?
I do not.
All right, with that, there are no comments or questions. We have a motion to approve the minutes as noted. Brian, please do the roll call.
The motion on the floor by Mr. Voilin is to accept the minutes as presented. I'll call the vote. John Blasko.
Aye.
Vang Mao.
Aye.
Gina Avant.
Aye.
Dean Fox.
Aye.
Vira Hogan.
Aye.
Phillip Jefferson.
Aye.
And Michael Voilin.
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we have a unanimous approval of the previous meeting's minutes. Next, we'll move into the old and new business portion of our meeting. Just as a general reminder to those in attendance, the conduct of the planning commission. This is not a scheduled public hearing. However, our meeting is open to the public so that the public can obtain information about the items on our agenda. The meeting will be conducted in the following order for each agenda item. Staff overview of the request, presentation by the applicant and others in support, along with comments by speakers and opposition to the request. We'll then have questions and discussion from the commission, comments and vote by the commission. Then for each agenda item, comments by the applicant and proponents are limited to 10 minutes, and comments by opponents are limited to 10 minutes. We request that the comments not be repetitive and where possible, that a spokesperson is designated to present the views of a larger group. First, on the agenda, we have conditional use permit CUDZ 2009 Pearl Street Town Homes. Members of the commission, I would respectfully ask to recuse myself as my employer is the applicant on this project. So Mr. Mao will take over for this, for the rezoning and the conditional use subdivision. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the Town of Garner Town staff present the overview case for Pearl Street Town Homes, both for rezoning and site plans?
Yes, this is David Bamford. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I will get my slideshow ready for you.
And David, you need to speak up just a little bit.
This is a conditional use rezoning with a conditional use subdivision plan. The property is located along Pearl Street in downtown Garner, south of West Main Street. The property also has frontage along Parker Street. The tract size is approximately 2.16 acres. And if this moves forward tonight, this will go to, go to a town council public hearing. This map shows the vicinity of this area of Garner. A portion of the rezoning site is located here. Are you able to see my cursor or is that not visible?
We can see you.
We can see it.
Okay. So the site's south of West Main Street. It is west of the Garner Recreation Center. It is east of the Garner Baseball Fields. The site also has a tract south of Parker Street. This is a Google Street View looking south on Pearl Street with the baseball fields to the right with the rezoning site on the left side. So it includes the site north of Parker Street and also a portion south of Parker Street. This map shows the zoning in this area of Garner. The site is zoned R9, which is residential. Minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet. In this area of Main Street, the Garner Recreation Center is zoned Central Business District. To the east, on the west side, at the corner of Pearl and West Main, we do have a portion zoned Central Business District, conditional use. This is where the Garner D post site will be located. The baseball fields are zoned R12 and retail sales indoor manufacturing. Because this is a conditional use request, the applicant has proposed to restrict the range of uses to the following. Under household living, townhome condos, upper story residential would be permissible. We have uses under community service, educational facilities and services, healthcare, entertainment, Also proposed, under the retail sales and service category, we have banks, financial institutions, indoor retail sales, beauty hair salons, personal service uses, and indoor kennels and veterinarian uses, as well as indoor manufacturing. So this is a list of the proposed permissible uses. In addition to the proposed list of uses, the applicant has proposed the following conditions for the development. Each dwelling unit constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of 1,300 square feet of heated gross floor area. Each townhouse unit shall have at least a one-car garage. The front facade of each townhome unit will include the following treatments. Number one, a covered entry. Number two, at least three operable windows. And one entry door. Three, at least one two-foot horizontal offset per unit, per every two units. And number four, garage doors with carriage hardware and windows. Next, each townhouse group defined as a building containing four to seven townhouse units shall include at least two of the following siding types on the front facade. Number one, boarded battening, two horizontal lap siding, and/or shake siding. Each townhouse group defined as a building containing four to seven townhouse units shall include at least two colors, not including trim, on the front facade. Any vinyl siding used will be at least a minimum of .046 gauge. Number eight, all townhouse units shall have water table masonry at least 18 inches in height from finished floor elevation. Next, all residential building site conserving, building on and conserving the existing character and also commercial development. And the next three are from the plan. Market, a healthy brand that celebrates the local flair of Garner and emphasizes the town's positive evolution. This is page 58 of the plan. Also, on page 58, the plan states encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding area. And lastly, attract unique commercial establishments on page 68. The Garner Forward Plan does show an opportunity sketch for this area. This is on pages 52 through 53. And the plan does show multifamily redevelopment west of the new recreation center with neighborhood commercial businesses with frontage along West Main Street. So what's being proposed with the commercial lot at the corner of West Main and Pearl Street with multifamily development is consistent with this part of the Garner Forward Plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Does any of the planning commission members have any comments? Do I need to do a roll call?
You could individually go down the list and ask.
Okay, let's go with Ms. Avant. Do you have any questions for town staff?
No, I do not.
Mr. Fox, do you have any questions or comments for town staff?
Yes, I do, Von. David, how are the, how are the townhome and commercial parcels being treated differently as far as the zoning conditions are concerned?
The zoning conditions really just apply to the townhome development because there is a companion site plan that shows the townhome project. So there is not a site plan showing the commercial lot development at this time. So to answer your question, the only conditions that would apply to the commercial lot would be the list of permissible uses.
And that was, one thing I was curious about is that the list of permissible uses would actually significantly increase the non-residential uses of the residential part of this subdivision should the residential development not move forward, correct?
That is correct.
With respect to the individual list of conditions, is there, I did not see it, I may have overlooked it, but I did not see it in the backup or the plans, is there a size proposed for the one-car garage, or is that something I need to ask the applicant?
You can ask the applicant. I do not believe there was a condition that specifically addressed that.
And as with other townhome developments that we've gotten in, we've oftentimes had special architectural features proposed as part of the conditions, such as a door transom, a dormer gable on the front of the facade, those types of things. I presume since that's not listed, none of those were proposed?
That would be correct. I have not seen the site plan package, so I don't know if there's any additional information in there.
I did not see anything. There were no elevations either, that would have helped a lot. And that was another question I was going to ask and possibly ask the applicant. I presume there's no elevations of the type of townhome that might be proposed available?
I don't have any information on that.
Okay.
Great.
On condition 5D, it talks, well, actually, condition five, it talks about the front and side of each townhouse unit. And then it has condition B, which refers to garage doors with carriage hardware and windows. Are there any front entry garage doors proposed for this fellow?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
This is Stacy. There are not. They're all, the garages are all in the rear.
Okay. Thank you. So maybe we just need to tweak that a little bit before it goes to council, just to make sure it's not tied to the facade or the front of the building for clarity purposes. On condition eight, it says vinyl siding is apparently the only material type that's being proposed. Is that correct?
I do not know if that is the only material being proposed. The, I believe the condition is if it's used, the minimum gauge must be .046, but no other materials are listed in the conditions.
Okay. Maybe that's another one that the applicant could possibly help us with. And then, there was no reference. How far ahead?
Sorry, this is Jeff. There is the 18, or the water table feature, I believe, in the conditions.
There is. I just know that, again, from past experience, we've had a lot of different material alternatives beyond the water table, and I just wanted to confirm that was not...
There are no conditions that address that.
And the plan states for a maximum 35-foot height of the buildings, the neighborhood meeting references two-story response from the applicant, so I'm assuming that these are just going to be two-story and not higher. Do we know that?
I don't have that information. The maximum height would be controlled by the zoning district.
Right, but I just, but that seems that it could allow something bigger than two stories, so I just wanted to ask. And then finally, we had 12 conditions in our backup. I think I only saw 11 on your presentation. Can we pull that back up and just see what may have been eliminated or reenacted?
Right, so on my PowerPoint slide, number one would be the list of permissible uses. So the number one on my PowerPoint is number two in your staff report. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Actually, permitted use table is number one in our report, so...
Right, it's number one in your report, but it's not number one in my PowerPoint.
Okay.
I think I've got...
So you just don't have a number, is what you're saying?
Correct, right, I have the numbering wrong.
I think that's all I had for staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Vira Hogan?
No comment.
Mr. Phillip Jefferson?
No comment at the moment.
And Mr. Michael Voilin?
I have a question for the applicant. Cover it then or now?
All right, thank you. Okay, and then I guess we are complete with the zoning. We're moving to the site plans, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. I need to share my screen with you. Okay, y'all let me know when that pops up, if you would, please. I know sometimes it lags behind.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is the subdivision plan conformity section of the presentation. 2.166 acres with 28 dwelling units and one non-residential lot. The tree coverage requirement of 14% is being met with new plantings. There are several perimeter and street buffers to kind of take into account with this project since it's divided by a roadway. But on the east side of Parker Street, that has only street buffers, it is bounded on all four sides by roadways. The west side of the development has two street buffers where those two boundaries are bounded by roadways. And then on the other sides, you have four different measurements along those perimeters for buffers. A 10-and-a-half-foot buffer, which is a 30% reduction of a 15-foot buffer, a 35-foot buffer against single-family, a 24.5 percent, or 24.5-foot buffer, which is a 30% reduction of, I was supposed to say 35-foot buffer, sorry about that, and an 8.75-foot buffer, which is a 30% reduction after allowance of half of the 25-foot buffer to be planted on each parcel, this parcel and the adjacent parcel. Street trees are provided approximately every 20 feet along public streets as required when using under-story trees due to overhead power lines. Typically, you'll see that every 40 feet, and those are with over-story trees, but we do have an allowance to use the smaller trees where overhead power lines are present. 10% open space is required. They have provided 10.9% open space, and Parks and Rec did recommend a fee in lieu of Parkland dedication for this site. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved this plan. This site does not contain any FEMA-designated floodwater or rain. For stormwater, this site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and quantity requirements for the one, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes a bioretention area to treat impervious surface for nitrogen and water quantity requirements. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this development. The site will be served with City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer that will, I'm sorry, that's a part of an old slide, copy and paste there. You see the existing infrastructure there, though, that they will be using. For infrastructure, Pearl Street is currently paved from West Main to Parker and gravel south of Parker. The entire frontage will be widened to half of a local street section with curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and five additional feet of right-of-way will be dedicated. The site also has frontage on Parker Street, which will be improved to a local street section with five feet of additional right-of-way being dedicated. The northern set of townhomes will be served by a one-way public alley with entrance via a driveway on Parker Street and exit onto Main Street. And the southern set of townhomes will be served by a two-way public alley with a driveway on Pearl Street stubbing to the east. There you see the site plan with a couple of things pointed out. The bioretention area, which will be grassed and have some plantings in it, with townhomes facing in that direction, and then an alley that goes down the middle of those two sets of townhomes where you'll see rear entry for both of those sets of townhomes. And then your one-way alley road, I think that's B, I can't really make that out, roadway B, going from Parker over and behind the townhome units to the guest parking and male kiosk area, as well as to the commercial lot to be developed later. Parking for each unit has their two spaces as required on their individual lot. Townhomes do also have an additional requirement for guest parking at a rate of one space per four units. Guest parking for this development is shared with the male kiosk parking and parking for the commercial lot to be developed at a later date. There are 10 spaces required for guest and kiosk parking, and 10 spaces are required. Lighting for the parking lot meets the requirements of the UDO as well as staff recommendations for LED lighting. The street lighting will be reviewed at construction drawings submitted. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not call for improvements along Main, Parker, or Pearl Streets. Therefore, with the noted improvements, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendation of the 2018 plan. This project site does not fall within a land acquisition area for the Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Greenways Master Plan. Therefore, with the fee in lieu of Parkland dedication, this project, as proposed, may be found in conformity with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff of this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. One, prior to receipt of approved plans, engineering department inspection fees must be paid to the Town of Garner. Two, prior to recordation of the first final plat, documents establishing an HOA and restrictive covenants shall be submitted to the planning director for review. Prior to issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department, and the stormwater program administrator shall be in receipt of proof of payment for the required nitrogen offset payment to an approved mitigation bank. Four, prior to the issuance of each building permit, a fee in lieu of Parkland dedication shall be paid to the town. And five, the developers shall be responsible for all roadway improvements. We do have recommended motions in section eight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I might have, and the applicant is also in the meeting with us as well for your questions.
All right, thank you. We will begin with the questions from the planning commission to the town staff. After that, we will have the presentation by the applicant, as well as others in support or in opposition. So let's go ahead and begin with our planning commission's comments for town staff, if we have any. We can go ahead and begin with Ms. Avant.
I do not have any comments or questions.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
If we could, Mr. Mao, if I could go later, that would be great. I'm still trying to pull a few things together.
Are you saying that you want me to come back to you in a minute?
Yes, if you would.
Okay. Ms. Vira Hogan?
No comment.
Mr. Phillip Jefferson?
Stacy, on the... Uh, yes, um, um, Stacy, on the south side of the townhouse development, um, the public alley is a twenty is that a twenty foot roadway or twenty five foot roadway roadway that's down there?
Sorry, I was trying to see if I could zoom in and see as well. Um, I think it is twenty feet.
Okay. Um, and the two parking spaces, I'm assuming that one parking space is considered the actual garage, and the other is the driveway of the garage, I mean, of the of the house, is that right? Or are there actual two spaces to park outside of the garage?
Be counted in their garage.
Um, and this may be a question for the applicant, um, uh, just to clarify how the garage accesses the actual interior of the unit, if that is being accessed from inside of the garage, stepping up into the unit, or is there an access point? But I I'm assuming that's that that will be the case.
They are not showing these as detached garages. So um, they'll be on in a second for you to ask that, but I'm assuming that it there will be access from the inside of the garage if you're accessing from the rear. Still, there are no um detached garages.
Um, and then um on the east side of the road A, which is between the south um set of units, um, the entrances from Pearl Street, once a car reaches the end of Road A, the only way out is to back out. Is that correct? I know this is only assuming it's just a private entrance, but it does is a public public alleyway.
So there is that fire line in between the two groups of townhomes right there um that is a turnaround point.
Okay.
It's in the like the middle of the block.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Michael Voilin?
Yes, just for clarification, the bioretention device is basically just a grassed open space?
It is um, as far as for appearances, um, if you want, Leah is also on the call, if you would like her to explain more how that will function.
Um, sure, if done quickly, just for my edification, or maybe others.
Sure. Um, hi, this is Leah. I don't have a camera, I'm sorry, but um, so it will be an actual bioretention device that's designed per the minimum design criteria put forth by the state. Um, there's a those can be designed either grassed or planted. So this one will be grassed um basically that way with the grass, and they'll have some more aesthetic plantings kind of surrounding the bioretention. They can use it as an open space yard area as well, but it will be designed to be a functioning bioretention device.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I believe we have all the comments from the um or concerns um addressed or questions to town staff at this time. Um, the next item is for the presentation, yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Dean Fox, forgot about you.
Thanks. If I could uh just ask a few questions, Stacy. Um, if I do the math correctly, and and tell me if I'm wrong, if the commercial lot is removed from the calculation, it appears that the maximum number of townhome lots based on three thousand foot uh minimum area would only allow twenty seven units. Are we allowing the commercial lot to be factored into the density calculations for the townhomes?
Yes, I believe we're using the overall acreage for that.
Okay. Um, do we have any idea, going back to one of Mr. Jefferson's questions, do we have any idea of what the plans are for the twenty five foot alleyway through the southern tract as far as the possibility of extending it further east towards Montague? Or is it anticipated that that is definitely going to be a dead end?
I don't have any further information about the development of it. Um, Jeff, do you have anything on that?
Um, I believe that we felt, when we were discussing this with them, that eventually it would connect perhaps to another um another teed alleyway behind any development that would front onto Montague um or at least provide another way out um but servicing development that would front on Montague and need rear access um from there, much like Main Street.
Okay, well, that in with that information in mind, our our downtown plan currently calls for non-residential on that side of Montague. I know it's just a a best guess at this point in time, but are we comfortable having a a street go-through and connect like that to a potential non-residential development? I know I asked about that with Minglewood Townhomes uh project and hoping that we could get that connection. And I was told uh in one respect that was not really something that we would want to do. So we're kind of in the same situation here, uh, Minglewood with a shopping center here with possible non-residential development on Montague.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the Minglewood discussion. Uh, I know that's something that we initially pushed for at staff level. Uh, so I'm, I can't really recall who said that.
The thing that I believe was the discussion with Minglewood, I do know that we pushed for that. The shopping center did not want that connection. They would not grant the folks at Minglewood the shopping center connection.
Right. David, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, that was it. The we asked for it, but the shopping center couldn't get their group to come to an agreement for the street connection. And so we asked for the pedestrian connection.
Right. And so the town does control those three parcels at at the end of the alleyway, so um with that with that provision being made now, we would insist on whoever the town turns that property over to to incorporate the alley accordingly.
Okay. Um, similarly, do we have any idea of what the Lions Club is proposing to do with their property? Um, I and I'll get to why I'm asking that next, but.
I have more information on what they're planning.
Yeah, we we do not at this time. Uh, Mr. Hodges has been in some discussions with them, but nothing there's been no decision on their part as to what they want to do with their property at this time.
Okay. Um, the alleyway that's along the northern tract that actually runs between uh Parker, right, or Pearl, Parker, and uh Main Street, um, that's a very narrow alleyway. Is is that gonna involve uh garbage or EMS access, anticipated access along that alley?
Will be for the um trash service, but Public Works has reviewed that, and they are fine with the width of the alley.
Okay, and um if there are any reason, uh, obviously, it's going to take away from opportunity on Main Street if we allow it to connect through uh to Main Street, if there are any reason that this cannot go through the the parking lot at the northern end of the townhome side, southern end of the commercial lot, and uh not continue on up to Main Street. There's just a lot of uh potential issues with that, limitations of on-street parking in the future on Main Street if needed, uh, conflict with pedestrian use of Main Street sidewalk, that type of thing. What's that looked at?
I don't have anything on that. Leah, do you have any comment?
Um, I mean, I don't know that we necessarily looked at the alternative of restricting access to Main Street and directing them through the parking area. Um, if we're planning on doing, you know, trash pickup through that public alley, I don't know that them going through their private parking area would be desirable. Um, I think having that kind of public, even though it's just an alley, but having that public link out to Main Street was gave us a little more flexibility.
Um, also, the if I interpret the information correctly, we are saying that these lots will have, the residential townhome lots will have zero front setbacks and between zero and fifteen feet maximum rear yard setbacks, is that correct?
That's correct. That's established by the underlying zoning district.
Um, being the CBD? Um, and is that tied to the text amendment that we just did a month or so ago? Is that what we're tying it to?
Yes, there were some text amendments that went ahead of this to um hopefully projects that would work in that in that way, yes.
Well, I know the text amendment mandated a minimum of five foot front yard setback, and that was based on a two-foot rear yard setback for enabling somebody to park all right of way. Um, fifteen feet seems a little too tight in the rear yard, and I I'm not sure where we can approve or where we base the zero-foot front yard setback um other than that, so I could use some help, clarification on that.
They have a twenty foot rear setback on these plans. I think there might have been an error on that
Okay.
to accommodate cars parking in the driveway.
And then the text amendment showed a five yard, a five-foot minimum front yard setback for CBD specific to townhomes. So I I'm not sure where can we allow a zero-foot setback.
And it, uh, that one appears to be five feet. Let me um check on that. I can check on that while the applicant is speaking as well.
Okay. And then finally, um, on Pearl Street, we show a altered um typical section for a typical local street. What did we require for the Depot property right across the street? I know it was future and not a part of the initial phase, but do you know what we were requiring typical section-wise there? Because uh it it doesn't seem like we're maximizing our uh right-of-way with this altered uh typical section that we're allowing on the townhome side, so.
So what we've required here is it's the same street width as in our uh typical section for the local street. It is five feet less right-of-way than what we would typically require, which we decided on because of the limited space in the downtown area. Uh, but it will still have the same pavement width and curb and gutter and everything as a as a normal local section would.
Well, if we do the math, uh, we're we're looking at uh a right-of-way of twenty five feet, a distance center line to back a curb of fourteen and a half feet, so that leaves us ten and a half feet from back a curb to the right-of-way line. But we're, the main thing I'm concerned about is the reduction in the utility strip between the curb and the sidewalk and trying to get a better understanding of why we're doing that, because if we're reducing that, we're actually allowing or or proposing to have, let me do the math real quick in my head here, about three feet of right-of-way, unused right-of-way on the backside of the sidewalk. And I just uh, I I'm not following the purpose of that.
Uh, I I believe the purpose was we uh just came to an agreement to allow the shortening of that to accommodate kind of the restriction, the restricted conditions downtown. Um, looking at kind of being able to fit that strip of townhomes um along Pearl Street there. Like you just mentioned, the setbacks, I think were reduced from what is typical. And then we we basically were willing to reduce the utility strip to what we thought was feasible because we know that there's limited space in that downtown area um to give more of that kind of on-street close to the to the sidewalk type of feel that the downtown is intended to have. And Jeff might be able to speak to that a little bit on a holistic level as well.
I believe some of the the other things that came into discussion was having enough room for street trees as well. If you're dividing it up between front yard and utility strip, um, it doesn't give you much space to actually get get a tree in.
Okay. Well, I know we'd looked at some planned residential developments and had similar concerns about that on some of those, and I don't believe we altered the typical section for the public streets along those properties, but uh a two-and-a-half foot offset from back a curb to the sidewalk is allowable with NCDOT standard, but uh really that that's that's not something, just like the alleyway behind with a twelve-foot width, uh, you're going to have people parking on the side of that alleyway, and then it's going to be next to impossible for the garbage trucks or uh or emergency vehicles if they need to get through there to get through. If we were planning on doing something with the Lions Club property, possibly allowing things to shift and widen out to their site in the future and widen that alleyway out, then I might not be as concerned about it, but uh that uh those two things are of concern. And, you know, this is really a place where on-street parking is. If there ever is a place uh that on-street parking would be preferable, um, this would be it. And so as far as Pearl Street, it's um kind of interesting that we're not trying to push for that. I believe we did with the Depot site, and so I I was just curious how this matched with the Depot site. I don't think I ever got a answer to that. Do we know what the Depot site was going to be required to do?
Um, I don't remember right off if we had modified uh the section along the Depot site as well. Um, that's, I can I can take a look back at it.
Uh, okay.
I did um take a look, and they do have a five-foot front setback on their plans.
Great, thank you. And did we verify, we we did verify the twenty foot on the rear?
Yes, that's correct. We did.
Okay. And Stacy, all the questions I asked David about the conditions and the zoning, would those be better sent to the applicant? Or do you want to weigh in on any of those that I?
Um, I don't have any comments on the conditions themselves, so yes, I would definitely ask the applicant about that.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have, Mr. Mal.
All right, thank you. I just have a general question.
I just have a general question. And it has to do with the traffic movement as well as this is near the baseball area. Or is the town staff concerned with any noise ordinances late into the night? I don't have a good idea of when the baseball games would end, and if it ends, there's bound to be traffic movement all, all around this area. Is there a, uh, traffic mitigation or some kind of a sign put up that says no street parking? Or is there some kind of a, um, control about what time noise needs to be quiet down? It's, it's just a general concern of that nature. What's, what's the thinking of the town staff in, in controlling this situation?
So, Mr. Mall, I would just note that there's residential here already, and there's residential on the other side of, of the fields as well. So it's a, I'm not sure of the, all of the exact specifics for the operations, but it's, suffice it to say that it's kind of an existing condition, and I think it's been pretty well, pretty well monitored and handled, and the folks at the baseball, they're, they're operating within the applicable rules. So there's no, you know, parking is limited on Pearl Street already. They do have some overflow behind the Depot for parking. There's parking further down Pearl Street as well. So, um, yeah, I'm not necessarily sure of all the specifics that apply, but just to note that it is, is an existing situation that is, seems to be working in harmony right now, and that there are hours of operations that would govern the lights and things of that nature.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the next portion, which is presentation by the applicant. Does the applicant want to say anything or present anything to the planning commission?
Good evening. This is Beth Blackman with Timmons Group, 113 Larder Lane, Garner, North Carolina. I just want to say thank you to staff and to the planning commission for hearing this and all the questions. We worked through a lot of these issues with staff. It's very challenging when you have a very skinny site with a lot of existing roadway frontage, trying to work out and fit anything unusable. And the town was very helpful in trying to brainstorm and have ideas to, to make this a, a viable site for now and in the future. Sure, I'll turn on my camera. Um, so we, uh, you know, we went through this process, worked with town, and we will, I wanted to, a couple of questions. Architecture-wise, we, the developer is own, but they own the property already. They were more looking for what could they do with this and do not have a, a builder or actual elevations in mind right at this moment. It's more of trying to set up zoning conditions that would be appealing for the downtown area. Dean, you mentioned about the rear, the garage doors. When we talked through the conditions, I, I noticed that it's kind of a default condition because you're expecting to have front pantry garages, and that's not always the case. And so, uh, and then the other question about the rear patio area, because they are rear-load garages, there isn't a patio area. The rear is basically your driveway. The, um, but the front, you mentioned the transom and the side lights, because normally we add, those get asked for or get added because you also have a garage door, and that takes up most of your front. These will have just a front door, you know, and a, and a front window, kind of as a normal house look without a large garage door taking up space. So it should be more appealing visually without having to add the, the transom and the side lights in. Um, I'm trying to think if there was anything else you asked that I could go ahead and answer now in advance, but I'm here. Keith Roberts is on the phone. He had some technical difficulties and couldn't log in, but he is on the phone, and the developer is here as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak on the behalf of the applicant?
Hey, Beth, this is Fire. Just one quick question. What's the price point?
I'm sorry, you said price point?
Yes.
Um, that's another thing. I don't know that we know. You know, it's, it's difficult to build anything nowadays. All the building prices have gone up. So I don't know that, that the developers have an idea correct a second. It would, it would be sort of market rate, whatever kind of fits in with that area. I know we had a neighbor reach out, and she was excited about, you know, new development. She bought her house and was, and doing improvements and stuff like that. So we definitely want to add value to the neighborhood. But I'll let the developer, if he has any ideas. But like I said, we haven't even really picked out, they haven't picked out, you know, floor plans or anything yet, so it's hard to say.
Do you, Beth, do you try to help me answer that?
Yeah, Paul, if you just want to introduce yourself.
Uh, Paul Flaherty, uh, 793 Ball World Street, Clayton. Uh, I'm all, myself and Tauton are, are bought the property a long time ago, and we're excited to finally see the redevelopment project that we, we're hoping will going to happen, and we're glad to finally see it happen. We appreciate, like Beth said, the town working with us. It's, it's a small site, but once again, we're really excited to bring something new to downtown. And as far as the price point, it's like Beth was saying, we're just not real sure right now. Only, it will probably be in that, and this is kind of guessing, that 250 to 275 range. I mean, we're trying to, um, you know, keep it affordable as we can, given today the building expense, you know, what it costs to build nowadays.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mall, this is Philip Jefferson. I have a, a question regarding building materials. Is, um, is there any, has there been any discussion with the developer about adding brick to the material component options as opposed to just board and battened siding and horizontal siding? Considering that this is a type of urban infill for a downtown central business district, I'd, I'd kind of like to hear the, the reasonings or thoughts behind only suggesting that the materials would only have a 18-inch masonry water table and no more additional material that might be brick? Or masonry?
Well, here again, we have not, um, decided, we've not partnered up with a builder. We hadn't talked to a builder. We were just trying to take one step at a time. So that's one reason we don't have any elevations at this point, or, or have not come up with the final decision as far as the exterior trim.
Okay. I'd like for us to, to, to kind of keep the conversation about infill in an area like a downtown, to think about how it matches some of the downtown character of perhaps there is brick, um, as part of the exterior as opposed to just a standard kind of water table, since this is not, um, a, a site that is just in, outside of a business district, but it is mixing with an existing context. That being said, also, not knowing what the site plan would be for the exist, for the new commercial lot, I guess the question also would be how would the materiality of the townhomes match the materiality of the commercial unit facing Main Street? Has that been part of a discussion yet at all, or thought process about that, that relationship between the commercial component and the residential component material-wise?
Uh, once again, it, it, we hadn't gotten that far, but I would imagine the commercial building would be all either brick or block, um, you know, whatever would be acceptable to the town of Garner.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I'll just run down the list real quick of the planning commission members to see if anybody has any more questions to the applicant. Uh, Mr., oh, Ms. Avant?
I do not.
Mr. Fox?
Yes, uh, yeah, this question's probably for you. Can you explain to me a little bit about the 12-foot one-way alley? The, the typical section shown on the plans show a 20-foot paved, 25-foot back-to-back if it's curved, but doesn't show any details about what your thought was about how that 12-foot width would work. Can you give me a little insight as to, are you going to have any kind of paved shoulders or any kind of usable area other than that 12-foot paved width?
So, yes, the, the one alley is the standard Garner street design for an alley with curb and gutter. The, and the other one as well has, is going to be, um, curb on one side, and totally, so we can have all drainage only on one side. It's going to be super elevated. Totally lost the word for a second. Um, so that pavement width was worked out with, uh, with Chris Johnson to determine what was adequate amount of actual pavement. Uh, and then there will be the 20-foot driveway outside of the, outside of the right-of-way width, you know, which is a foot or so behind the curb.
So it looked like even with that narrow width, that you're still going to have to do some grading, at least from the plans. I know it's still probably preliminary, and you don't know for certain, but you may have to encroach on the Alliance Club property a little bit, even to get a 12-foot wide alleyway on there. So I understand it's a tight, tight fit. The curb is going to be on the building side or on the Alliance Club side?
Um, I'm relatively certain it is on the building side, but let me flip to the grading sheet and make sure.
That would make me feel a little bit better about it because it, you know, it'll make it harder for people just to park on the side of the street on that side, hopefully.
I'm pretty certain that is correct. This is Leah.
Okay.
At that intentional lane, we drained it all to, to your side.
Right. And, and that, you know, as far as the grading, it is preliminary, and hopefully we can work out everything without having to encroach, or we can work something out with the Alliance Club because, you know, in all honesty, this could be very beneficial for redevelopment or working out something with, with their site when the time comes. Um, and yes, there's, yes, it is the, curb is on the, the building side, and so all the storm drainage is on the building side.
Okay. And did you ever consider taking the alleyway and connecting it to the, the parking lot and having that exit out onto, back out onto Pearl instead of coming out on Main Street?
That never came up. We did not consider that. We talked about which direction the alley should go and which made the most sense, and, and Mr. Trezenberg asked for the exit, for you to leave the site onto Main Street so that would not cause traffic turning into the site from Main Street, if that makes sense. And so that would make it more of a, a smoother, people wouldn't be entering there and backing up traffic on Main Street, was, was the only thought process that we, we had talked about.
Okay. And one question I probably should have asked staff, but I'll go and ask you. I don't think there's any plans to extend Pearl Street, so there, there's no turnaround or anything for that proposed with this development is, has that been talked about?
Well, so when we were discussing the orientation of which way these town, the lower section of townhomes faced, you know, whether they faced Parker or they faced Pearl, we actually talked about facing them to Pearl. The reason why we turned, the idea was to use this alley as a turnaround for Pearl Street. So it's a relatively short distance that, uh, you know, most vehicles are back up 150 feet. So the alley now acts as the turnaround for Pearl Street.
The 25-foot proposed alley between the two townhomes?
Correct.
Okay.
So anybody that went down Pearl Street, got all the way to the end, they could back up and turn around in the alley without having to back all the way up to Parker Street.
Okay.
Or, or turn around and somebody's driving.
And you were asking before about any other questions that you may not have addressed, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I got them all.
Uh, there's a couple more. The size of the garage, so I'm, I'm assuming it's almost got to be a one-car garage with each of the units, so do we have an idea?
We are setting it at a minimum as a one-car garage. Rear-load townhomes can actually be two-car garage at this width because basically the back is just a garage. That would depend on what plan the developer ended up with. So minimum of one car, but it could actually potentially be two.
Okay.
Uh, we have, we have done other developments that had a 20-foot townhome that had a two-car garage.
Okay.
But I would imagine one car.
And I noticed in the public meeting minutes that it was answered to one of the local residents that it, they are going to be just two-story.
Yes, we never talked about, um, I, I got where you were going with that as soon as you said it. You know, the more urban, um, three-story look.
Exactly.
We'd never have discussed that. Um, and I actually don't know what the building height limit is for the central business district. So staff might could help out with that, but I don't think, um, price point-wise, the three-car was, I mean, three, the three-story was really talked about.
Okay.
Right, if I can jump in, that's, that's correct. We, earlier you mentioned price, and we go up a third story, that's going to kind of take away from the, the mindset of trying to keep it in, in that affordable range.
That, that makes sense. Uh, I, I was thinking, just like Leah, I, I'm sorry, just like Beth was alluding to is that if there was ever a place to be able to go more upward, that this would probably be it. So I just wanted to get a clear understanding of that. Your plan's called for a 35-foot height max, and so that would lend itself to be maybe a little bit more than, than two-story. I just want to make sure.
And, and that is kind of a standard. I will say that's a, pretty much a standard note for everything that we normally would do because that is usually the max height for any development district we're working in in Garner, but I have not worked in the central business district before, so.
Okay.
The, the central business district doesn't have any height restrictions.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly strike that note. It's just a, a note in the site data table. It's not like we're, it was a zoning condition.
Okay. And, and getting back to the Pearl Street typical section, um, you know, downtowns a lot of times will actually have sidewalk all the way out to the curb, and having just a little tiny strip there lends itself to a lot of opportunity for challenges with other things finding their way into that little strip, particularly if you have on-street parking, that's going to be a problem potentially if you start putting street lighting poles or things of that nature in that, that strip and then decide to have on-street parking there later. So, um, if, are there any reservations? So um, if, are there any reservations that you or the developer might have about possibly altering the sidewalk section and and actually paving all the way to the curb if that's something that staff would be supportive of? And by paving, I mean sidewalk.
Um. I don't know that we have a a preference about, uh, I would have said more like shifting the sidewalk through the back of the curb. Uh, usually you make it like a foot wider when you put it behind, right behind the curb, but I know in our conversations with engineering department, they were trying to maintain their utility strip because a lot of other things go in that utility strip.
Okay.
But I I think we would be flexible if uh, but we we discussed the road setback exactly with the engineering department.
Okay, just a lot of right-of-way behind that sidewalk that uh, uh, it does seem like the sidewalk, if anything, could go back a little bit more, I realize the five-foot setback, so so you can confirm to the five-foot front yard setback, twenty-foot rear yard setback?
So these units are shown at a five-foot setback, and the driveway is twenty feet long, so that builds you in a a twenty-foot uh, rear setback, even though technically from the, I think when we first started talking about this, this central business district had the zero and fifteen and the zero for the front, but that may have been updated with with the text amendment, I'll just.
Okay. I think that's everything I had. Thanks, Mr. Mal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox. Please, Vera Hogan?
No comment.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Michael Voilin?
No, my question about the price points was answered, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who want to speak um, in support of this project? Hearing none. Um, is there uh, anybody who want to speak in opposition to the request of this project? Hearing none. Um, I believe let's go ahead and have questions from, final questions from the planning commission to both the applicant and or town staff at this time. I will go down the list. Um, this is our final comment, so I encourage our planning commission members to voice any concerns or comments that they may have. Ms. Uh, Avant?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
No, I have none.
Ms. Hogan, did you say none?
That's correct, no comments.
Thank you. Mr. Jefferson?
Um, I just have a couple of comments. Um, I do agree with Mr. Fox's question about the sidewalk width. Um, I think when we begin to create infill uh, housing like this in a central business district, which we hopefully eventually will grow, um, that front sidewalk becomes the, in a way, the outside and the in the entryway of the of the street and of the of the unit. Um, that's a gathering space as well for unit for 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 the um, uh, occupants. Um, it becomes a wider space to be accessible. So um, I I think it's important for us to think about that as a as an extension of the unit in the kind of urban context, uh, of small urban context. Um, also, material-wise, I know that there's there's a price point involved in um, thinking about materials, but I think when we begin to insert into the business, the central business district, the materiality of the exterior also needs to, I think, really be thought of, and I I have a little bit of a problem with us only thinking about the material as two of three um, materiality options of board and bat and horizontal um, lap siding and shake siding. I think when we get into a business district like this, we need to think about masonry component, brick as well, so I would have make a suggestion that that material is at least added to that as part of an option for the exterior, um, to begin to match with the context of the downtown. Um, and that's that's all I'll I'll add.
Thank you. Mr. Voilin?
I have nothing further.
Okay. With that, I believe I'm moving this back to the planning commission. We will have comments in general to the planning commission about this, and then we will move to vote by the planning commission. And I will go down the list again. Um, these are comments in general to the planning commission for uh, discussion purposes, if there's, if there is any. Uh, Ms. Avant?
No, I have none.
Mr. Fox?
I'd like to commend the developer and staff in uh, uh, setting up something that matches very closely to what all the downtown plans, the uh, latest comprehensive plan update as far as a site, um, uh, idea of what could go along this area. It matches almost perfectly to that. I do have, as you could tell, uh, a few concerns about the design specifics, but the intent and the use, um, I'm I'm very complimentary of, and I appreciate the efforts to to do what the plans call for.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
No further comments.
Mr. Jefferson?
I have.
No comment, Mr. Jefferson?
I have no addition, no additional comments besides what I have already recommended.
All right, thank you. Mr. Michael Voilin?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay. I believe at this time we have completed our comments at the planning commission. Let's move on to the motions. We are going to have motions about the zoning and about the site plans. Can I have a motion to recommend approval or disapproval of the request zoning to the town council?
I move that the planning commission accept the staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan being detailed in Section Five of this report as their own, and recommend approval of C U D Z two-zero-zero-nine, which includes the conditions stated in Section Three of this report to the town council.
Thank you. Can I have a second motion, please?
This is Michael Voilin, I will second that.
Thank you. Then the zoning, um, let's see, oh, let's have a vote, right? Okay, let's go on to vote. Uh, Ms. Avant?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hogan?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Voilin?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore, which is an aye. All right, then the zoning is approved. Let's move on to the next item, which is the site subdivision plan. Can I have a motion to recommend approval or disapproval of the request site plan to the town council?
Mr. Mal, before, this is Dean Fox, before we take a motion, could I ask staff one question?
Sure.
Um, would we need to add a sixth condition for an agreement for cross-access for use of the parking spaces between the commercial property and the townhome property?
I don't think so, do you, Jeff?
Um, yeah, I mean, it it probably should be recorded once with the subdivision since it is going to be shared. Depending, I guess it depends on exactly where the property line is, I don't have the plans right in front of me.
This is Dean again, it it goes right down the middle of the parking lot, that that was the one I had.
Yeah, then I would, I would just add that to be recorded.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are moving to the site uh, subdivision plan. Can I have a motion to recommend approval or disapproval of the request site subdivision plan to the town council?
Mr. Jefferson, I move that the planning commission confirm staff's finding in Section Seven, that C U P S B two-zero-zero-seven, Pearl Street Townhomes is in conformity with adopted townplans and policies so long as the six project-specific conditions identified therein are met.
Thank you. Can I have a second motion?
This is Gina, I respect her.
All right, thank you. Then we are moving to our vote. We, I will go down the list. Ms. Avant?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hogan?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Voilin?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore, which is an aye. Okay, then with this, it's um, the motion is carried to have the zoning and the site subdivision plan to move to the town council for their consideration. Thank you. And with this, I yield the floor back to Mr. Chairman, John Velasco.
I thank you, Mr. Mal, I appreciate that. Um, with that, our next agenda item would be the um, U D O text amendments for the uh, U D O two-zero-dash-zero-two, Chapter one sixty-D implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, commission members. I don't have a formal presentation for you tonight as we introduced this back in, I believe it was November. Um, been giving you hopefully plenty of time to try to absorb uh, the amendments that are being proposed to help implement uh, the Chapter one sixty-D uh, changes that are required with that statutory amendment. Um, so I believe you have an amended staff report uh, in your packets with a recommended motion from us. Um, I know, I'm sure that there's probably those some questions, thank you to those of you who sent some questions out in advance, um, but we're here to answer any questions, remaining ones that you may have. Uh, if you've noted anything that needs to be corrected, uh, we will continue to be tracking these um, in a memo format for the town council when we go back to them. Uh, so with that being said, um, we'll just uh, see if you all have any questions, and we'll do our best to respond to those. Um, I've got David and Gabby here still with me, and of course, Brian is there with you. Uh, Gabby and David will kind of help me navigate uh, the the drafts if we need to pull up anything on screen. And um, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jeff, much appreciated. Um, I think all my questions were addressed in our previous uh, communications, so I will go through the rest of the commission to see if there's any questions or comments. Ms. Avant, do you have any questions or comments for Jeff?
I do not.
Ms. Hogan?
No comments.
Mr. Voilin?
Uh, my only comment is I thought the staff did a terrific job.
Thank you. Mr. Jefferson?
I have none.
Mr. Fox?
Uh, I feel guilty, but I've gotta ask at least one, so.
Well, we wouldn't expect anything less of you, Dean.
I I know, I know. Um, Jeff, I just, I I've got to ask, um, please confirm uh, the recommendations on who reviews and comments on the various types of plans that we would see and council would see are due to mandates by the general statute change to one sixty-D and not merely staff recommendations? In other words, the fact that ninety percent of the stuff that we will see will now go away, that is all mandated by general statute one sixty-D and not uh, a just a preference from staff?
Right, so. I that I I believe I know what you what you're getting at. Um, so things that are special use permits, um, that will be quasi-judicial, um, those will no longer be coming to planning commission because of that uh, purely quasi-judicial realm, and uh, not having discussions of those cases outside of of those hearings. Um, that's been a extremely questionable practice in the past, and so um, that has been reinforced, I think, with the language still in one sixty-D, so on the advice of of those involved, um, we will be sticking with just taking those to town council. Uh, however, anything that still involves a rezoning, um, whether it be general or conditional, and so most things will be going through uh, that conditional process, um, even prior to say going to a special use permit. Um, in order for a project just to go straight to that special use permit process, the zoning is gonna have to be in place. Um, so that will continue to probably be more the exception than the rule as it is now. Um, so planning commission will still be involved in the the all of the zoning aspects, which by and large will precede um, any of those special use permits, and you'll see, you'll see more attention to uh, to the site plans in those cases because then uh, the site plan itself will be a condition of the zoning. Um, so it won't be as simple for folks to, I guess, amend those site plans, so they're gonna have to do a little extra, little extra effort on the front end to to be discussing those, because amending those or modifying those will be be a little more tightly controlled in what will have to go back through uh, through a whole new hearing. Um, so yeah, that that kind of, that kind of summarizes it, we're we're no longer doing the the mixed cases, it will be strictly one or the other. Um, and y'all will be continually uh, involved in the the legislative side of that as a legislative recommending body.
Okay, thank you, and and it appears that a lot of the things that we may have been involved with or may be in council are now open to be going to the Board of Adjustment instead, and so, um, similar with that, that's that's all state statute mandate versus.
Yeah, your your Board of Adjustment is is the ones that are charged with doing the interpretation, so a lot of the stuff in particular that was left to uh, staff to have a lot of administrative leeway, um, that is being tightened up. Um, and so if if folks really want to pursue some of that leeway, if it's if it's more open-ended, uh, they will have to go to the Board of Adjustment now to, in order to get that leeway.
All right, Mr. Fox, any further questions?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mal?
Uh, I have no comment, I just wanna compliment the town staff. I just want to compliment the town staff and all, everyone that worked on this UDO text that I believe all the topics has been well thought of and has been well discussed, and I look forward to the final product when all this will be put into practice. So I guess the test is when we put this stuff into the practice and how well it actually gets incorporated or how the process is being completed at that time. But I think we're going to have a good product, so I think the town has done an excellent job as well as working with all, every one of us, including I, and so I appreciate everybody's time.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, just a quick question. Could you just reiterate kind of the timeline moving forward between not only 160D but also the other portion of this because, well, if you could reiterate the timeline, please?
Sure. Sure. So as you noted, there is, this is just, this was a part of a, a larger rewrite project. So this portion that will be moving towards adoption now really addresses a lot of the procedural corrections that needed to be made, all of the, the substantive how things look that is still yet to come. So for this portion of getting the procedural steps in place, we are hoping to have this adopted by council at their first meeting in March, and that will hopefully allow us to kind of make a clean break. We do not anticipate having any of the mixed quasi-judicial items on your agenda next month in order to kind of help facilitate that. Next month, you all will just be seeing legislative-type items. The intent would be is that come that first meeting in March for the council, if it is adopted, we'll kind of, we'll ask anybody who's in mid-review to file new paperwork for their applications, just acknowledging that when they do get to the public portions of their review, that they'll be going through the new process. There won't be any change in fees or anything like that, so it should be fairly seamless. We would just ask again, of course, for those first few months, please have patience with us as we also are getting used to doing things a little different, but hopefully it will be much, much clearer for all of the boards involved as to what their roles are and what kind of process you need to conduct your meetings in, and will hopefully be a good thing for all involved.
Thank you. And what's the general timeline on the development standards update?
Yes. So we're still on track, working with the folks at Stewart. We've got a few, we'll be back to regular monthly meetings with steering committees starting at the end of this month. I think we've got a meeting coming up on the fourth Thursday of this month, and we're targeting fourth quarter of this year still in 2021. So we'll see in particular how the next few months go and see if we can keep that, keep that on track.
All right. Thank you. I think that concludes all questions and comments, so if there is a motion out there, would someone please share?
John, this is Vira. I'll make the motion. Recommendation, staff support the movement as presented and recommends approval of UDO text amendment 2002, UDO 2002. Possible amendments will be taken highlighted for the final town council decision.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Is there a second?
Mike, Mike Voilin, I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Brian, I can do the roll call, please.
All right. The motion on the, on the floor by Ms. Hogan is to recommend approval of UDO 20-02. I will call the vote. John Blasko?
Aye.
Vang Ma?
Aye.
Gina Avant?
Aye.
Dean Fox?
Aye.
Vira Hogan?
Aye.
Philip Jefferson?
Aye.
Michael Voilin?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Sounds like we have a unanimous recommendation on, on the UDO text amendment. All right. Moving forward, we have up next the report from the planning director.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I do apologize. I tend to pull these together in, in the afternoon here prior to the meeting, and I've had a kind of extended family happening that has occurred recently, so I didn't get that information pulled specifically together, but I would, if you all have any questions on anything specific that has happened since your last meeting, I'll be glad to answer any quick questions on those.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, so any questions for Jeff? We'll start with Mr. Ma.
No, I do not.
Mr. Jefferson?
I do not.
I think we missed that one, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Voilin, did you, it's your...
This is Mike Voilin. No questions.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
No.
Ms. Avant?
I do not.
And Mr. Fox?
Once again, sorry, but we usually receive an annual report on the progress of staff's work on the comprehensive plan and trying to achieve its goals. Jeff, I know we tried to shoot for December, January timeframe, I think was when we got the first report in what would be 19.
Yeah.
Is, is there any idea of when we may get another one of those?
I am hoping to, I'm working towards a, having that pulled together for the work session at town council at the end of this month, and if I can get that through there, I will be sure to invite all of you to, to that presentation, or I can also most certainly give you a presentation of that at the following meeting in February.
Great. Thanks. I'll certainly leave that up to the chair as far as format, but I think I was just receiving it and kind of, there's been some questions come up about particularly affordable housing, other options, other items that were supposed to be part of the comprehensive plan to be pursued, and I know everybody would have a lot of interest in that, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Also, I hate to kind of bring it up, but I've got to, is there's been a lot of media reports about a new VA development that's in works on Highway 50, which is in a unique location. I just wondered, are we going to see anything on that, or is that going to be just strictly through staff and council?
So I believe that one, at the very least, it requires the rezoning, and then due to the size, it does require the special, the special use permit. I'll have to go back and check and, just double-check and see how that one's going to transfer over, but as of this time, it would be both a rezoning and it would be a conditional rezoning with a conditional use permit.
Okay. Thanks. I'm very excited about that coming. I've got family members that have to travel currently over to their home every time they need some type of assistance, and so that's very much needed. I, I just hope that we're citing it in the right location, and I'm sure that when we get the information, we'll be able to tell more about that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. I think with that, unless there's any objections, that will bring this meeting to a close. That, we will adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.